Our next item of conduct of business is item 10(c), adopt a resolution repealing resolution 1986-64 and directing implementation of a modified policy and amended ordinance for replacement, repair, and maintenance of private sewer laterals and adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with utility service partners to offer residential sewer lateral warranty service.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Over the course of the last year, City Council has received presentations and discussed changes to our current sewer lateral policy for maintenance and repair on several occasions. Actually, reviewing the staff report, I see that's actually five. Tonight is the fifth occasion, four previous occasions. Specifically, the change under discussion would reassign responsibility for maintenance and repair of the sewer lateral from the city to private property owners. Currently, approximately 75 percent of homeowners in our city already have this responsibility, and they wouldn't experience, they would experience no change in service as a result of the proposed new policy. This is because these homeowners have not installed a city-approved sewer cleanout on their lateral. For the smaller number, the greatly smaller number, 25 percent of property owners whose lateral is outfitted with an approved cleanout device, the city currently provides an extremely high level of service by maintaining the lateral and, and this is the high level of service, if it needs to be repaired or replaced, that is done by city contract at its expense. As staff has previously reported to you, the cost of this service, and in particular, the replacement and repair of private sewer laterals is rapidly increasing primarily as a result of the aging condition of these pipes. In response to comments and concerns that have been raised in previous public discussion of this issue, we're here tonight to provide you an alternative recommendation that was discussed and endorsed recently by the City Council Utilities Subcommittee last month. Tonight, you have on the deus, and we've just now distributed to you, a proposed draft ordinance that is not, you're not being asked to adopt this ordinance tonight, but I wanted to call you to your attention that your packet did not have a annotated version of the ordinance such that you could see the proposed changes. That's what has been distributed to you just now. And if we have done in previous situations where a new policy is proposed and an ordinance would be required, if it is your decision to proceed by adopting the resolution that's in front of you tonight, then we would bring back this ordinance subsequently for first and second reading, and the proposed new policy would be in place subsequently after the adoption of the ordinance. So with that, I'm going to ask our deputy director, Jim Birch, to outline the proposal more specifically, and then ask for your further discussion.
Thank you. As the city manager mentioned, the, the proposed ordinance would return the repair and replacement back to the homeowner. The city would retain the maintenance responsibility if there was a city-approved cleanout. We provide already emergency services, and we're, under this action, this proposal for you, in front of you tonight, we would continue to provide emergency services no matter what the case was, after our services or anything. So if there was an SSO, a homeowner would call, we would still roll a truck to the site and provide service as best we could. It's just that if there was a repair that needed to be made, we would communicate that to the homeowner. And where a new cleanout was installed, we would, if you want to call it enroll, the new lateral, the lower lateral, into our maintenance program. We would keep an eye on it and make determinations about whether we would do a root foaming or a routine cleaning, or whatever the case may be, we would customize the maintenance for that particular lateral and its condition. One of the things that is likely to impact our maintenance for these laterals is the point-of-sale ordinance. As you know, or as I would like to remind you, May 8th is the date where the ordinance takes place. We've already gotten, I've spoke to 12 realtors thus far. We've had one customer who's turned in a video, and interestingly enough, they have a city-approved cleanout, but they have three separations in their lateral, on the upper lateral. So it was good information for them to have. It was an important part of the sale of the home, and my understanding was the realtor was not excited to have the information, but it's just a bit of information that they really need to know. If directed by the City Council tonight, we would return to, staff would return at an upcoming meeting with a revised and amended ordinance for introduction and then adoption. The new ordinance would be effective 30 days after its adoption, which would occur no earlier than June 11th. We would have to communicate these changes, obviously, to the public. We would ask that, we would recommend that we have informational workshops, not just send out information, but literally have a workshop where people could come and learn about their lateral, their responsibility, and also what the city's responsibility and actions would be if they experienced problems. This, again, would have no impact on the people who have become accustomed to the maintenance services we provide, some of them on a three-month cycle, based on the conditions that they have with their lateral. We would continue to do that. Additionally, as part of this conversation tonight, we would, we've been in discussion with several companies, as we've discussed earlier, about the warranty coverage, and we also have a resolution that would authorize the city to enter into partnership agreement with utility service partners, which provide homeowners with the opportunity to purchase warranty coverage for repair and replacement of laterals for a fee of $9 per month, and I think I have that somewhere. Just as a reminder, this is the, oop. This was the information that we presented earlier, and this is the warranty program that Daily City uses and several other agencies across the country, actually. And just to let folks know, there have been several reports, and I've seen information where a different company, and I think maybe even up to two different companies have sent out mailers, and the ones that I've seen have been related to water lines, and it says, it's a little bit deceiving for some people because it says "City of San Bruno Water." So people see that, and they think it's the, our water division's endorsed it, or the city's endorsed it, and that's not true. But it's a company that's, and I don't know if the company's a good company or bad company, but it's, it's not one that we've partnered with, and I want, I want that to be clear. But this is the warranty company that we've researched and has the best coverage for laterals, and I think they have other products as well. So we'll be asking for your approval on a resolution regarding that partnership. Staff also recommends, as I said, the informational workshops, but we would also seek to reach out to different community groups, and in particular, the Association of Realtors, who I'm actually meeting with tomorrow on the point-of-sale program that we have down in San Mateo. But we reach out to those kinds of groups with information regarding the laterals should you choose to change the ordinance and the policy. And in addition, we would put the information on the cable TV channel and on the website and points of customer contact here at the city, the senior center, the rec center, and so forth. The fiscal impact of the amended policy would basically be related to those repairs and replacements that we've been experiencing, and we were sure that the, are confident that the cost will be reduced by at least $550,000, down to about $100,000, which is the cost of our maintenance program right now. As we add more laterals into the maintenance program, that number may change over time, but for now, that's, that's the number that we're using. So some alternatives, one of the alternatives for you to consider that we've put, put in, put forth is that you could keep the existing policy in place and adjust the budget allocation and the resources necessary to meet the increasing needs for the replacements that we've been experiencing. You could also provide direction for alternative implementation date if the June date was too soon or not, not quite right. Tonight, we're recommending that the council adopt a resolution that would repeal resolution 1986-64 and direct the implementation of a modified policy and amended ordinance for replacement, repair, and maintenance of private sewer laterals, and adopt a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with utility service partners to offer residential sewer lateral warranty service. And with that, that ends our presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions of staff? Ken?
So based on the staff report, and I watched the video of February 24th meeting, and the mayor stated that it looks like the majority of the council want more information, and so it was directed to the subcommittee. So I'm wondering what has changed from the previous, from the previous presentation? What's, what's different about what you're presenting tonight? Or is it anything different, or is it just the same presentation?
So the, the information that's being presented to you tonight is, was reviewed with the utility subcommittee, and that is a slight change to the proposed policy that would maintain, would retain the city's responsibility for maintenance of the lateral in those cases where sewer clean, a lateral cleanout has been installed. Previously, we were proposing that both maintenance as well as repair and place, replacement would be tasked to the private property owner. So with the relatively small cost, or the relatively smaller cost of the regular maintenance program, staff believes, and the subcommittee appeared to concur, that a viable policy and potentially more acceptable policy change would be to continue the maintenance program but discontinue the city's responsibility for repair or replacement of the private sewer lateral.
Anyone else? I mean?
If there's no any, no other questions, I guess we need people from the public.
Right. Slow down. We can hear you. Don't worry. Perry?
Perry, Pete. Good evening. Mayor, I am. Sorry. This is my introduction, but thank you for giving me the time to speak. I'm speaking, as I have before, on keeping the lateral program as it is. It's part of avoiding SSOs and larger state fines and orders, and is a benefit to citizens and businesses of the city. It's unfair and unrealistic to have residents to hire a contractor to work in sewers on city streets. This would be a frightening thing for them. Why are there problems with this proposal by staff? Well, first of all, I admire the staff's modification of some of it, but the state agrees and advocates that cities have a lateral program to reduce SSOs. The city staff apparently doesn't agree. Many peninsula cities have lateral programs right now. San Bruno grossly overreported its SSOs to the state from 2008 to 2015, and the city admits this error. This year's record drought weather cut SSOs dramatically, but wet weather is coming, and construction is needed now on the sewer mains to stop those leaks. Issues that are addressed with a lateral program include San Bruno's sewer system being a disaster of leaks. A lot of them are in the laterals. There is 10 times the dry weather flow during rains due to leaks when three times or less leakage is the more common figure. San Bruno is directed by state orders in 1998 and 2011 by the state and baykeepers to fix these issues, but relatively little has been done in the nearly four years recently while rates and revenue for sewers have doubled. Solutions for betterment of the city and citizens, leaks are from laterals and mains. Keep the lateral maintenance program and repair program and expand it. Virtually nobody knows if they put in a cleanout, they could get the city to maintain the lower lateral and repair it. Keeping the program continues the city's support for its citizens since 1976 and 86. The lateral program is part of the city's positive response to state sanctions. It costs the city money to treat wastewater, and lower flows will save citizens money. Vigorously, the city should use its own master sewer plan, which details how to fix the sewer capacity and inflow and infiltration issues. The city should set target dates for design and construction project completion and meet them without fail. I think you all may realize there's been a lot of slippage in past projects. What has the city done? This year, the city paid for the lateral program by raising the wastewater rates. So keep the program. You've already made the first step. The city has just started on repair of the most critical sewer failures, the main lines. This is great. City, I mentioned it hadn't been done for the past four years, now you're hitting it. The city staff recommends abandoning the lateral program. This is awful and counterproductive. What should the council do? Direct the staff to keep the lateral program for resolution 1986-64, and also reduce leaks into mainline sewers with construction projects that meet time schedules. I provided the city with a, with a written request for information on the backup figures for the graph of estimates. The city did respond, but unreasonably, with unreasonably little amounts of data, but it did admit a number of mistakes in the graph. The current graph has lots of changes from the previous one. I've just submitted another request for data. I would hope that the city would provide that data. I'm trying to understand the problem, and I'm every day appreciating the magnitude of knowledge necessary to address it, but I really recommend you keep that program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'd like to address the council.
Evening. I'm Woody Zama, to live in 120 Parkview Court, San Bruno. My question is, I'm not quite clear. You're, you're mentioning the private lateral and the, the city lateral, from the cleanout to the main hookup. Now, is the city still responsible for, from the main to the cleanout, or from the cleanout to the main, I should say, that lateral part, and that you are no longer responsible from the people that don't have a cleanout?
So the current, the current city policy is that if you have a city-approved cleanout, it has to be in the right spot, that the city would maintain from the cleanout to the main?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jim Evangelist, 105 DeSoto Way. I'm here to speak on maintaining the current program of sewer maintenance laterals, and so I would like to just remind the council members, and this is a bit technical, but the city, San Bruno's singular sewer problem is allowing too much rainwater into its collection system. This dates back to 1997 cease and desist order and continues in the cease and desist order today. Lateral maintenance, the lateral maintenance program, which is supported by the state, plays an important role in preventing rainwater from entering laterals and then overwhelming our mainlines. This causes capacity-related SSOs. The lateral program has become the scapegoat for wastewater management. When in 2008, lateral SSOs were incorrectly reported to the state for the next seven years. Disproportionate amounts of hotspot repair money were spent on lateral repairs instead of repairing grade four and grade five mainline, mainline problems. This violated the spirit of the consent decree, at least in my opinion. Already in the last month, I think if we asked management, I think the city has already stopped doing as many lateral repairs as they were doing just a month ago before they found out that they were incorrectly reporting. And now they're giving contracts to the contractor to do mainline repairs where the real heavy work is being done to prevent these SSOs from occurring during rainy seasons. Work orders are now being issued, I think, for the mainline repairs. It's just seven years late. These, these bad management decisions would almost be forgivable if the department did not ask the city council to repeal resolution 1986-64. In essence, the city is asked to accept and condone management's poor sewer maintenance game plan in blowing up a program that benefits the environment and the community, and to follow its new game plan in repealing resolution 1986-64, which will add, which will directly add to the problem of controlling rainwater entering the sewer, city sewer mains. A balanced spending plan for lateral versus mainline is what is needed, as exemplified by how the system was managed before 2008. Keep in mind, and expense not mentioned in the debate about the lateral program, the cost of treating rainwater is about $20,000 per million, per million gallons, is seen in building, is also seen in building larger pump stations and a larger treatment plant, which we've had to do. During a rain event, this results in millions of gallons of rainwater being sent to the treatment plant. This money could be used for replacing infrastructure. In summary, the cease and desist order and the baykeeper's consent decree both mandate that the city achieves zero capacity-related SSOs by 2020. Both documents mention a private lateral program as an important element in achieving this goal. Our current program, if well managed, will only help the city in meeting the 2020 goal of zero capacity-caused SSOs. So I, like I say, I suggest keeping the program as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Let's go on, Andy Mason, Cherry Avenue, Low Honorable Counsel, City Staff. A couple things, as I mentioned before at previous City Council meetings. Insurance companies. Insurance companies are risk averse. They're like any organization. They don't want to pay. They are, at minimum, respectful on the phone. Utility service partners, just doing some basic searches, single-family homes, that's what this program is involved in. So if you have a rental, if you own the property, and there's a rental property related to that, I don't know the ins and outs of that. When you open a policy with this group, you've got to ask the right questions as a resident. Another thing insurance do, companies do is they ask about pre-existing conditions. Say you have an 85, 90-year-old home in San Bruno, they might ask you questions, hey, how old's your sewer lateral? Have you had any maintenance done? I guess as a resident, I'm 39 years old, but San Bruno is a 100-year-old city. A lot of my neighbors are in their 70s and 80s. You've got to think outside your own age group. People have lived and worked hard in this community for these homes, and they might have inherited them, their spouse might have passed away. A 1986 program that shepherded the citizens of this great city, and we want to fleece it out to an insurance company? I'm sorry, but, thank you. Just think about it and vote accordingly. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Russ Steins, Reed Avenue. Just a little thought here. I heard Councilwoman O'Connell last time say this doesn't really benefit everybody, so it only, and I heard it again tonight from the city. It does, it doesn't benefit me personally. I know it doesn't benefit you because you had your main redone. I know it doesn't benefit her, but there are, you know, there are 25 percent of the residents here in San Bruno that does benefit, and we shouldn't forget about them. So, I mean, it, it seems to me if you have a lateral that is legal, it was put through the building department, this should all be on record, and if you have that, the city should stick up to its end and at least cover the people that are the 2,500 people that are and have been paying the 60 cents, even though the rest of us can't get it. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Lamshar. I'm on Palomar Court, and I just wanted to lend my voice to the support of the lateral maintenance program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, my name is Bill Geste. I'm seeing a court, and I think we should keep the lateral program. I mean, currently, if the, if your water main breaks, that goes to your meter, the city fixes it without a question. What's the difference if the water's coming or going out? I think the, the lateral should stay, and the policies should stay, and the city should be responsible for repairing laterals. Thank you so much.
Marty Medina, Garden Avenue. Good evening. I just wanted to shortly just echo what everybody's saying. I think it was, it's a good program. It's a little sweeter that they did at, keep the maintenance. That's nice, but it's only one insurance company. We have to have that one insurance company? Can we choose a different insurance company? How does that work? Thank you.
Question regarding insurance companies?
So through the chair, I can address a couple of those questions. First of all, on Mr. Medina's, just the last question, there's no requirement that you go with any particular company. There are a number of companies that provide this. What the city did do is do a pretty extensive investigation into the companies that provide this type of coverage, and what we found was that not only was this particular company endorsed by the National League of Cities, but it had the lowest rate for the greatest amount of coverage. But of course, residents can, can get whatever they want. The other part of it is that actually it's not an insurance company, and I know it's easy to call it that because it sounds like insurance, but it's actually a warranty company, and that's, that's completely different. So they do not ask about pre-existing conditions unlike a health insurance company. All they will do is send a flyer that's been approved by the city that says for X number of dollars, you can get this, this coverage, irrespective of how old your line is, how old your house is, whether you replaced it last year or 20 years ago or whatever. So none of those things relate. It's just simply pay the premium for it, and they will provide you with that warranty coverage. So that's the information that, that we have about that particular warranty program.
All right. Real quick, real quick.
It's limited to $8,000, $8,000 per occurrence? And the typical repair would be $15,000?
No.
$20,000? I mean, on average cost that the city's paying, can you share that with the public so they know what they're actually going to get? Because if it's $20,000, I mean, you're still out 12.
Let me just answer that. From personal experience, I had a very difficult situation. We couldn't pipe burst the pipe. We had to actually dig up lots of lawn, lots of concrete and everything, and put in a whole new lateral with a cleanout, and it ran just about $6,000. So, and that was extraordinary. The original bid, until we knew what we had under the ground, was about three. So it's, you're going to get a lot done.
But that didn't go to the street?
No, it didn't go to the street. I put in a cleanout.
Right.
And now the city comes, and every, I think it's six months or so, and looks down and checks it, and if they have to do a little, you know, whatever they have to do, they have to do, all right? And they, they, they do that. Now, the difference is, in this program, if in fact, there's a real problem with the lateral as it exists today, and the program exists today, the city comes out and says, woo, we have a real problem with the lower lateral, we'll take care of it, all right? Under the new program, if, if there's a real problem with the lower lateral, I take care of it, all right? But you can get a warranty policy to take care of that remainder. The question I have for Jim, and maybe I, maybe you clarified it earlier, is if in fact, you don't have, you can, you can sign up with these, these warranty companies without having a cleanout?
That's correct.
All right. So, so if in fact, you don't have a cleanout, and I had a warranty policy with the, with these people, I could say, hey, I've got my warranty. They would take it from the house all the way to the street. Is that correct?
That, that's correct.
Okay.
We met with the representative, and what he had told us was they're in the business to get things fixed so that they have a good reputation, and because they partner with cities, it's in their best interest to take care of the problem in a meaningful and permanent way with a lateral and move on. And they said it's And they said it's less money for them in the long run if they do that, and they actually retain customers who've had their lateral repaired, which seems counterintuitive. But that's how they built their reputation. That's the service they provide to cities like the city of Phoenix in Arizona. So they've partnered with some really large cities and provide this service, you know, throughout the country, but there's other companies that do it as well.
Through the chair?
Michael.
Just to clarify one point on that, in terms of the consumer having an option, the way these warranty programs work, once, they do not offer these services to residents unless the city partners with them. So once we make a decision to go into that partnership, that option becomes open to the residents, but they don't have the option to go to another company that we have not partnered with. So it's...
No, that's not correct. This company's business model, this particular company's business model is to partner with cities, and partnership simply means we approve and endorse the mailing materials that solicit business. There are already other companies that are already mailing and not engaging with the city in any way, but simply soliciting within the community, and customers, residents are perfectly welcome to sign up with anybody they wish or not to use any type of warranty program. So this is, this is a particular business model that this particular company uses. They've done it successfully in other communities, and we felt as part of the change in policy that there, that it would be desirable simply for the city to do something that would provide an endorsement, to check out the company, provide an endorsement so that we would know that our citizens would have a viable option should they choose to take on a warranty program and the expensive of a warranty program to take the place or to otherwise address, to take the place of the service that the city is currently providing and/or to give them peace of mind.
Okay. So while this company doesn't, wouldn't do it directly with the residents, other companies do work directly with residents.
That's correct.
That's correct. Those are the mailings that I was referring to earlier, that people have come to us or gone to utility building and said, what's this about? San Bruno Water? And a little bit of a confusion, so.
Okay. Thank you.
What do you have to follow up real quick?
Yes, asking for another clarification. You had mentioned that if the lateral from the cleanout to the main, if it's a minor problem, the city will take care of it, but if it's a major problem, the homeowner's responsible for it?
Under the resolution tonight, yes. That's what's on the table.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense. That's counterproductive there. I mean, if it's simple, the city will take care of it. If it isn't simple, the homeowner's responsible.
Here we go.
I mean, who's responsible for the lateral, for the main hooker?
Well, I think the ownership has always been the homeowner's responsibility. In our ordinance, the lateral is owned by the homeowner, from the house all the way to the main.
From the house to the cleanout.
All the way to the main. All the way to the main. The ownership has always been the homeowner's responsibility. The Resolution 1986-84 spelled out what the city would do if there was a city-approved cleanout. That's what's on the table tonight.
So the city wouldn't do anything if there's something wrong with the lateral from the cleanout to the main?
Under the proposal tonight, we would continue to do maintenance services, but if the lateral from the cleanout to the main was compromised or damaged in some way, you're correct, it would be the homeowner's responsibility.
Okay. Anyone else? Any discussion or action by the council?
Through the chair.
Real quick, Jim, follow up.
When I called the company, they did have pre-existing condition standards. That's what I was told over the phone. Just wanted to let you know.
Okay, well, we have different information, so.
Hi. Mike McGurk, 1740 Santa Lucia. I originally thought this was from my house to the cleanout, which I just did last year, and then beyond would be the city's responsibility. Now knowing that I'm responsible all the way to the main, please don't vote this thing in. Thank you.
I think any homeowner can appreciate that if there's a sewer pipe running across their front, under their front yard, it's their responsibility. But once you get out into the street, that's the public domain, PG&E is out there, cable TV, all the other utilities. You've got paving base and top coat and everything else. It's a nightmare for a resident to consider even imagining how to get a contractor to do that. It's just the wrong territory to put on a resident. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Through the chair?
Irene.
I have a couple of things. I appreciate people saying not to take this program away, and I appreciate that you want to protect people who are older or who have older houses or may not know what's going on. My mother, oh, she's probably watching, so I won't tell you how old she is, but she's in her late 80s, and she owns two houses in San Bruno, and they, one of them is over 70 years old, the other one's 60, 60-ish years old. And actually, she, anyway. The point is, the program that we have only benefits 25% of the people, and the cost of that benefit for those few people, relatively few people, is increasing, and it's increasing exponentially every year. And this last year, this current year, we're going to spend probably over 100, I'm sorry, over a million dollars to benefit just those few people. 70, 75% of the people do not have cleanouts, city-approved cleanouts. They are responsible right now. If we do nothing, they are responsible from their house to the main. That's the way it is. It's always, it's always been. They have to contend with finding a plumber who can do that kind of thing. I had to replace my sewer lateral from the house to the main because I had no cleanout. So I had to do that. That's the way it is. Lots of people have done it. A lot more people are going to have to do it. And as this program, as the city ages and the infrastructure ages, it's going to cost more and more and more, and it's not sustainable. We just can't keep on doing it. It costs in money, it costs in staff time, it costs in effort and management, and we get little return from it. I think some of the things that were heard were very confusing, and I've heard this not just these five times, I've heard it in other venues as well. The SSOs, yes, we reported them, that came from private laterals. In some ways, it's like, okay, so we did that. Taking the current program away, the repair part away, doesn't change anything like that. If you have a lateral, it still gets, I mean, if you have an SSO, it still gets reported. It should be reported. We want them to be reported, and we want them to be fixed. It's just whose responsibility from the cleanout to the main shifts for those 25% of the people. Everyone else already has that. So I don't understand some of that, but, okay. To me, that's one of the biggest things. The part with the warranty, it's a company that has proven itself. If you want to do it, fabulous. If you don't, don't. That's, that's the bottom line, and it protects you from, not just from the cleanout, if you have one now, to the thing, to the main. It protects the whole thing. So if you had had that insurance, it would have covered the whole thing. You wouldn't have had to pay anything. I wouldn't have had to pay anything. Jim wouldn't have had to pay anything. It would have been fabulous, but I didn't know about it, so. Anyway, I, I appreciate what everyone said. I, I don't understand not shifting the responsibility for repair to a few people that have a small amount of lateral that needs fixing. And as far as people saying that our staff and our maintenance are not doing a good job, I really resent that. We've worked really hard. This council's worked hard to get the sewer master plan done. We worked hard to get the rates up so that we had money to do the projects that we need to. We've spent millions of dollars. We've spent over, I can't even remember. We did the San Mateo Avenue one. We did the, what's behind it? Canes? We did the, the, what's the street behind Mastick? Thank you. We did those sewer laterals. We did the repairs up in Rollingwood. We did repairs on Chestnut and Cherry. We've spent millions of dollars, so I really resent people saying we haven't done anything, and that's my, end of my speech.
Anyone else? Ken?
Through the chair.
Hey, let's don't, let's keep it...
The reason why it's, the reason the way the thing is, the program is the way it is, is because if you don't have a cleanout, you can't determine where the problem is. So you, you must look at, looking at the entire system from the house to the main. It's not because it's the way it is, it's because we don't know where it is. If you have a cleanout, then you can narrow it down to house to cleanout or cleanout to main. Respectfully, I've been sitting on this council for a little less than a couple of my colleagues for 19 years, and we addressed issues of the age of this city, the age of the infrastructure. And so now we have a 100-year-old city, a, basically a 100-year-old program that we want to, in my words, February 24th, we want to dump, and we want to dump it on our residents. Well, for the last 19 years, we have dumped on the residents as far as increased fees, increased service, increased costs to fix a system that needs fixing. And we're, and it will keep going up. Each year, each and every year, those rates will go up because of a $5 million water meter change, because of other antiquated infrastructure. So why are we now going to use the semantics that it is the property owner's responsibility from the house to the main? And so now we need to give it back to them so that they can, you know, so that we can take it off the city's hands. I feel the city needs to be responsible for it. I think the city, I think majority of cities believe that the lower lateral is the responsibility of the cities, and somebody better correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the percentage is close to 15% of the cities have, are going in this direction. So that leaves 85% of the other cities that haven't done it or believe that it is still the city's responsibility. So I did a little research. I went to one of our largest cities, one of our most productive cities, Redwood City. So I go to their website, and they have a nice Q and A. What is a sewer ladder, lateral? What is the sewer main line? Then it comes to a question. Does Redwood City provide sewer lateral cleaning and service? Maintenance? City's providing the maintenance, yes, upon request and only to households that have sewer cleanouts located at the residence property line. Redwood City will provide a cleaning, snaking service for the cleanout to the sewer main line. Question. What does the public side and the private side of my sewer lateral mean? The public side, also called the lower lateral of the sewer lateral, is the city's responsibility. It refers to the section of the lateral between the sewer cleanout, usually located at the residence property line, and the sewer main line out into the street. The private side refers to all plumbing lines that are located inside the property line from the sewer cleanout to the house. The city of San Carlos recently, end of last year, adopted an ordinance to set guidelines on maintaining sewer laterals, and specifically note the upper lateral responsibility of the property owner and no reference to the lower lateral. And I hate to do this, but our neighbor, the city of Milbrae, in 2011, as a, as a result of the baykeepers also, adopted Ordinance 738, which states, maintenance of sanitary sewers. Now, this is the type of option or alternate that I was looking for. What they're doing is that if you want to have a sewer cleanout installed now, you must inspect your lower lateral. They will not install a cleanout to a bad lateral. So until you will, until you have that inspected, you will get a new, you'll get a new cleanout, and you will get a sign-off on your laterals. They still are maintaining those lower laterals, though. So I'm not willing to give it up yet. I don't believe, I think if there's a confusion here and a cost of a warranty, nobody knows unless the city's got figures. Nobody knows how much it costs to repair a lower lateral because the city's been repairing the lower laterals. You're saying that you repaired your lateral. Everyone that's saying that they've done it, they've done it. They've only repaired the upper lateral. That is the lateral that is the closest to the, closest to the surface. These are not the laterals that are going diving down under the sidewalk and down to, you know, as much as maybe 16, 20 feet in the middle of the street. That is a major project. That is a major project. That is not going to be $8,000. So until we have that information and until we have alternate in options, I'm not willing to dump it on the homeowners.
Rico, anything?
I don't know if I can follow that, but...
They're in shock. They didn't even apply.
I think my colleague, Mr. Rivera commented on quite a bit, so my concern is, we're talking about partnering with a warranty company, and we say it's proven. So when the resident feels dissatisfied, are they going to be calling City Hall and saying, well, the folks you partnered with that you condoned their information and their flyers, they're not servicing me well? So I don't know how we're going to handle that, but I would guarantee you that would happen. To advertise various companies and what their opportunities, that they exist for our residents, that they already do, and yes, there are residents that do have insurance companies currently that have already selected that for whatever reason. I know Cal Water has a program within South City and San Mateo that they operate. I know the city then tries to partner also and gives incentives, incentivizes in order to try to do lateral work as long as the money's there. I think that the concern has come up of not, not to report SSOs. The comment was that we're reporting the SSOs on the private property, which increase the overall number, which cause more additional focus on us from the regional board. I think that's, that's what they're trying to say, not, not to report it. My bottom line, the, you know, I know if there's a city tree, I guess one of the side questions I had, if there was a city tree that was causing this situation, how would that be handled? Would that be still the same as the homeowner, or does the city have some liability and would help out in that cause? I do also see that, you know, I hear about that the staff time that it will save and the resources, but I don't know that I see that in any reductions to the residents. There's 60 cents is being charged, and yes, I understand it doesn't amount to a lot in a year, but the principle of it is when you discontinue something, you don't charge the people for that. So to me, I see the costs have gone up. We're taking a service away, and so at this time, I'm not prepared to support this.
Jim, and maybe it's, maybe it's Nick Juve. What about the city tree situation?
I think that the process to do any sort of removal of the street tree, if it impacted the sewer lateral, would be the same as it is now. They would have to contact community services and have them come out and look, and there's a process in place to do that.
So it could be possible that if you have a city tree next to your lower lateral, and that tree caused damage, the city would still take care of it?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And I've heard a lot of good comments here, but I mean, the big one sticks in my head is if the 75% of people have problems with their lateral that don't have cleanouts, it's your responsibility all the way from the house to the main. Whether you like it or not, that's the way it is right now. Now, I understand, no more, please. Thank you. I understand that, like I said, speaking from personal experience, yeah, if in fact, my lower lateral, because I put in the cleanout, was damaged, the city would have taken care of it, and still will until if this is approved June 11th. But the city will still maintain, just as they're doing now, providing... But, the city will still maintain, just as they're doing now, provide the same services and emergency services if required. But, if for some reason that lower lateral, three years down the road, gets damaged, it's on me. That's, that's the only difference. What we proposed before was to have the homeowner take care of everything without a maintenance kind of situation. So, the compromise, I think, is a good compromise because frankly, 60 cents or $6, it's not going to pay for what we've been doing, especially going forward. So, that's my comments. Michael, do you have anything?
Yeah, thank you. And to, to address a, a point that, that Ken made, you know, regarding what, what Millbrae is doing, I'm wondering if maybe what we're proposing here isn't, it doesn't amount to the same thing because if we'll still do the maintenance at the cleanout, Millbrae requires that the lower lateral be inspected. Essentially, we'll be providing the same service. We'll clean it out as long as it's serviceable. They require it to be certified as serviceable. We would still be servicing it as long as it's serviceable, so it amounts to the same thing. You know, one, one thing that kind of sticks in my mind is either way, we pay for it. As ratepayers, we're going to pay for this. So, you either pay for it by writing a check or you pay for it with, with increased rates. And I was opposed to the drastic rate increases that, that we, we had to impose in order to fix the system. And if, in order to maintain this program, we have to make those rate, those rate increases even more aggressive, I, I couldn't support that. And it sounds like the program is getting more expensive. There's a lot more laterals that are falling apart. And, I mean, we can vote no, but what's the alternative? It's just raising the rates, and I don't think anyone wants higher rates because if, in order to fund the program, the money's got to come from somewhere. So, my thinking is that either way, we're going to end up paying for it. All of these repairs are being done by a contractor right now, and we, we approve a bucket of money every year that goes to doing these repairs. That bucket's going to have to grow. So, that, that's the only way to keep the program going. And other than raising rates, and, and I don't know if, if there's any other proposals really other than, I mean, that's really the only way to maintain the program, and I don't see us doing that really. So, that, that's why I kind of have to go along with the, with the proposal here. Because, yeah, it's, it's not sustainable.
Okay.
If, if I could just comment on what Michael's, there wasn't even a, there wasn't even an option to look at increasing the 60 cents to try to, you know, to try to, you know, address the issue. We have so many public works projects coming down the pike over the next 10 years, 10, 15 years, probably a 20-year program. We can't fit that in? We can't fit that in without, again, going back and raising the rates for that specific project? I just, I don't see it.
But, we did look at what it would cost to do that. It was discussed.
We did not, but, but we did not in a, we did not in a capital improvement plan look at replacing and including the replacement of our, of the sewer laterals in the existing program.
The discussion, we had a discussion, maybe it was the meeting that you were here, but we had a discussion as to 60 cents versus what going forward? What would replace that 60 cents? And it was fairly, fairly substantial.
Yeah. So, that discussion occurred at your meeting on January 27th and October 14th. And at that time, the information that was presented was an approximate $9 per month charge for, if it was applied to everybody in the city, if it, including those of us who do not have a, an approved cleanout and wouldn't get the service anyway. If it was applied only to those people who have an approved cleanout, the cost was over $20 per month.
So, it's substantial.
And that's at the current level of cost for the current program.
Okay. Any other discussion or action by the council?
Through the chair.
Irene.
I'd like to introduce the resolution, repealing Resolution 1986-64.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
No.
Councilmember Ibera.
No.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Then I'd like to introduce the resolution authorizing the city manager to exec, execute an agreement with utility service partners to our, to offer residential sewer lateral warranty service.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
No.
Councilmember Ibera.
No.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
And Mr. Mayor, through the chair, will bring back the ordinance for introduction and then adoption at subsequent meetings.
All right. Thank you.
Through the chair. Before, before we move on, I want to ask my colleagues if they're, if they would be interested in, in seeing something else come forward. I mean, we, we're going to move forward on this, but would you like to see something come back saying that we would implement a new program at a cost of $9 per month per, because this doesn't preclude us from implementing a new program. And if we can structure a new program that makes sense and fits within, within the budget, I would, I would support that. But, I mean, I don't think the program, the way it's set up right now is, is working, but I'm definitely open to something new if you guys think that there's something that we can structure that you could also support.
I, I just like to reiterate that in my opinion, I believe it is a responsibility from the property line to the, to the, to the main of the city. And no matter what is defined as responsibility, it's, you know, it's, it's my belief that we, that the city should be responsible for it.
Did you mean property line or cleanout?
Well, the cleanout's behind the property line, but from the property line to, you know, to the, to the main.
Through the chair, one other point I'd like to make. I'd be interested in seeing if, if we could maybe come up with a program as an incentive to homeowners to replace their laterals. If we could do something like waiving the, the permits and the encroachment fees that are charged when they do have to go into the street, that would make that replacement more appealing, desirable to the homeowners.
We can, we can bring that information back at the next council meeting when we bring back the ordinance. I think we can estimate what those costs would be and what the cost would be of waiver.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'm going to move forward on the second resolution as far as the, the insurance program for the benefit of the residents that are going to possibly take advantage of the insurance program. I would, we don't know enough. We just don't know enough about this program. We don't know enough about this company. All I have is a name and a rate. And like one of the members of the public stated, it's an insurance company. And I realize they get a bad rap, but the first answer, whenever there's a claim made, is always no. And it's from, it's every single insurance, you know, insurance claim, they're always going to deny it. And so, we're just going to get ourselves into another bit of hot water if we don't vet them accurately and get some, you know, get some referrals and, and get an idea of how they've been operating in these other cities, especially like Daly City.
Anything else?
I, I was just going to add in response to Councilmember Ibera's comment that we, we would intend to provide an opportunity to engage directly with the company for any interested citizen at the meetings that the deputy director proposed that we would schedule for informational purposes. And again, nobody is required to, to take a warranty program. It's simply an opportunity and any resident who has legitimate concerns, as you're expressing, and not having enough information or, or not wishing to, to do so is, is under no obligation to do it.
Well, you know, maybe, maybe bring forward or maybe do a survey of some of the claims that were in Daly City or any other, any other city that they're involved in. How did, you know, what was wrong? What happened? Did you contact them? How were you treated? You know, did, did, were there any unexpected issues? You know, were you surprised? Did they pay off? Did, you know, was, did, what was the fine print? Did you find something out? That's, that's my concern. I don't think we should be involved in this insurance business, but I don't, you know, if we're going to sponsor it, even though I vote no, if we're going to be involved in sponsoring it, we're going to have residents that are going to have this false sense of security in paying $9 a month, and they're going to think that as soon as that lateral breaks, that, "Oh, I'm so, I'm so glad we got the insurance policy," and then find out something else.
We ready for 10D?
Something else.
Okay.